Good night, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Wait a minute, where am I? Thanks for joining us. Would you like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is approval of the minutes. We have minutes of a special board of directors meeting from Tuesday, June 20th. Another special board of directors meeting from June 28th, which was a certificated personnel report. Minutes of the board of directors workshop, June 29th, on coherence governance. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes.
All in favor?
I second that.
Sorry. Thank you, Todd.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks so much. Okay, next up is the consent agenda. Do I have any discussion regarding the consent agenda?
Right, and likewise, because I have a remote interest in Microsoft, I need to recuse myself from that same account payable warrant voucher. And also due to a remote interest in Disney, I need to recuse myself from accounts payable warrant voucher number 76311.
Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Move that we approve the consent agenda?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next up, we have proposals for action. We have several policies. These are second readings. They've been workshopped. They've been through a first reading. Any concerns by the board would have gone to Superintendent Dieter for updated information, and so now we are on a second reading for final approval. The first policy is 6212 procurement cards.
6212, yeah, procurement cards. This just authorizes the proper use of procurement cards for the different departments and different schools to be able to purchase supplies. It's one of the recommendations that was made to us in the audit a few years ago, the performance audit the state did. And this brings us into compliance with the RCWs that have changed a little bit, and that's why this is in front of you. So basically, it allows us to use procurement cards to make small purchases that are under the limit that you can purchase and not have to do all the PO and all of the stuff that you would go through otherwise. And I have not heard anything over the last three weeks, so I'm recommending that we adopt this policy as presented tonight.
I did have just a curiosity on this. Because this was something that was recommended by the auditor's office, have we actually realized savings as a result of it, or is it a wash?
Well, I would say we may have realized some savings, but it would be very minor compared to what they suggested it might be.
Okay. Would the procurement cards be something, then, that we could use for the school supplies at the building level if there was something?
They do.
Okay.
They do. Every building has a procurement card.
Someone looking for those deals? That would be the savings that Victoria is mentioning.
Yep.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? We have any questions or comments by the audience on this policy? I see none. I will entertain a motion for adoption of policy 6212.
I move that we adopt policy 6212.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have 6213 travel and reimbursement of travel expenses.
And again, I haven't had anybody call with questions on this over the last three weeks, but basically, this is the process that you have to follow from the state auditor's office as well as the RCWs, and it's one we have followed. There's just an added statement that says, "The actual and necessary expenses for board members, staff, students, and agents of the district incurred in the course of performing services for the district, whether within or outside of the district, will be reimbursed. Travel reimbursement shall follow travel procedures developed and implemented by the superintendent." We have a whole procedure on how that works. So there's really not much change, other than to add that statement.
Okay. Comments?
I do have a comment. I'm looking at a removal of the sentence that the superintendent shall regularly inform the board, which we've seen as reports on the consent agenda. Do you know if that is...
That will always be there.
Is it moved to procedure?
Yes, but it's always going to be there.
Okay.
Comments, questions? Do we have any comments or questions by the audience?
Move that we adopt policy 6213 as presented?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Up, we have policy 6216 certification, approval and cancellation of warrants.
This is a new policy. We have not had on the books till now. It's recommended by WASDA, and it basically says that the majority of members of the board will approve the issuance of all warrants, and you get those in your consent agenda every board meeting. Expenditures to district money will be made on approved vouchers by a warrant signed by the superintendent, which happens when we pay our bills. And warrants to be issued will be recorded in the county treasurer's office showing date, warrant number, which we do. But all this does is codify it in our policies. It's the process we've been following forever, because it's an RCW that lays it out on how you're supposed to do it.
Okay.
So I, again, haven't heard anything over the last three weeks, so I'm recommending that we make the approval of this policy tonight.
Do we have any comments by the board? Do we have any comments or questions by the audience? Hey. I would be happy to entertain adoption of policy 6216.
I move that we adopt policy 6216.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On to policy 6220, purchasing bids and contracts.
This is really a very minor change. It's a renumbering from 7321, because the WASDA has eliminated the 7,000 section and moved everything into the 6,000 section of the policy manual. So it's a renumbering, and instead of saying financial management, it now says management support. And then on the second page of the policy pursuant to RCW 3904280, "The board may waive competitive bidding requirements." It used to say the superintendent. So that's the only change in this policy, is a renumbering and that one strike from the superintendent and moving it to the board. Again, I haven't heard anything over the last three weeks, so my recommendation is we make that adjustment.
Okay. Any comments by the board? Do we have any comments or questions by the audience?
I move to adopt policy 6220 as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, we have the family life and sexual health. This is a digital curriculum. Are on a second reading, so we've reviewed the materials, had input from staff, we've had teacher input here, so through our normal process of curriculum approval. And so now we're at a second reading for adoption of this curriculum. And I know we've had a little bit, we had some feedback regarding, just some concerns. Talk a little bit about kind of how we're going to move forward with that, so we can address the concerns that were raised.
And I'm going to call on either Chris McMurray or Dr. Stich to speak to that. They've been working through that.
Answer questions?
Well, we had some concerns raised at the last board meeting, and I know that you've come up with kind of a way to deal with that, and so if you can just kind of share with the audience and the rest of the board about what's going to happen.
Sure. So some of the questions that came up were regarding the process by which the resource was recommended. And so according to our procedure for curriculum adoption and development, we convened a number of groups and got feedback from all of the fourth and fifth grade, including the middle school. So it's a fourth to eighth grade curricular resource. Some of the questions that came up were relative to how did we effectively get feedback from all. We had a representative group, and we did solicit feedback from all the fourth and fifth grade teachers via email a number of times, which was one of the questions, one of the direct questions that came up. So we felt that we had as much participation as we were going to have, and the selection committee used that to inform, in addition to the select group that was chosen to vet the resource, to move forward with the recommendation. So the other question, one of the other questions was scope. So a question regarding how much information is included in the resource came out of the reviewing committee itself, and they thought there was way too much information in the fourth and fifth and possibly sixth grade units, and that some paring down and some sort of refining was needed. The fourth and fifth grade representatives that were participating in the review did actually pare those down, so it's not as much as is written, but it's definitely a smaller subset of what that is. Doesn't mean that after we use it, we can't continue to modify and continue to make it fit what we need it to do, and that's actually the plan with all of the resources that we bring forward. The plan is to continually review and monitor and adjust as we need to, because especially with a digital product like this, we have the ability to do that, and that's the whole reason why we go forward with that type of a resource, so that we can do that. What were some of the other questions that came up? Those are the two big ones.
Those are the two big ones, Chris.
That I believe people had.
And then isn't, so it's my understanding there's going to be a committee...
Yeah, so we have a review process that will give it a year at least and get some feedback as we go from teachers. It'll probably be in the second year that we'll actually take a look at any revisions. We don't want to make revisions to the curricular resource too soon, because people will have just had a chance to try it. So it's way too soon to start cutting into it and doing things that would be premature.
Feedback on the program?
There was not feedback on the program from beyond the selected, the review committees. The process actually began many years ago with nurses and school staff. And so this particular resource has been turned over and reviewed many, many times. And so the committee, the community aspect of that was specifically done in the review and the selection committees in IMC.
By staff?
Oh, and community, community that was engaged in that particular committee.
On the normal IMC?
There was not a larger group beyond IMC that was engaged.
But then, but all of the grade-level teachers that are impacted by this curriculum had opportunity to give voice to that, so that they, their input onto that, and that kind of changed exactly how we were going to roll that out.
And obviously, we don't get, yeah, we don't get input from everybody that we reach out to. So the people who are interested in giving feedback did that, and that was very helpful in moving the process forward, and ultimately, the ones that didn't respond didn't have input.
Available for anyone, a parent, to choose to view ahead of time for their child?
Yeah, we always, yeah, we have, I mean, we have that process, and we always have, and will continue to have a process by which people can see it, and the specialist in charge of that curricular resource definitely leads those, and we've had them here with the video set that we've been using since the '70s. And so that's very successful for those parents that have questions.
Integrating VHS tapes that are just, don't cut it anymore.
I don't think it's been since the '70s.
Maybe the 60s?
Late '80s, early '90s was...
Maybe late '80s, yeah. It was before my time.
It's time to revamp it, and I know the state's requiring it as well.
Time to move, time to move forward. Yes, it is, and they're pushing us to do that.
So, that's good. All right.
I have a couple of questions for you. The material that's been presented to us was all printed material. Are there audiovisual resources included in what we're approving today?
Yeah, there are. So everything that you have seen and that was reviewed lives in its learning, in the digital platform. And so anything that is connected to that is in there, whether there's audiovisual types of resources, if they're not in there, then it's not included. So everything that's included in that set that you've seen is what you get.
No, I reviewed all of the links under the course that you presented to us, and all I saw were paper curriculum, sample worksheets and things.
And that's all we've got for right now.
Okay.
We'll continue to build as we go.
This will still leave our teachers free to reach out to secondary resources and follow the links in these documents.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we want to make sure that people are accurate in their communications, and that any departure from the messaging that's in the resource is vetted. We would not want people going out and grabbing something ancillary that sort of negates what the message is in the core resource. And so that's the limitation, is that if you do start to go out to YouTube and look for videos, you're likely to get something that's not directly connected and/or appropriate.
Though, we're not approving a process today where teachers would have, I guess carte blanche is the wrong term, but...
Correct.
To go and get any audiovisual material to supplement this paper curriculum, you're still going to keep some control over that to make sure it aligns with standards and science.
Right.
Okay.
And, I mean, really, more importantly, we want to make sure that we are aligned with the standards, but we're also aligned with the recommendation and the review committee's decision, because that input from the teachers is forming the resource. Have people going rogue on that, then things start to fall apart.
Well, and it also, because of the topic and the fact that parents have the right to review it, we've got to be careful that there's not other materials that parents have not had a chance to preview.
Right, yep.
That's the drain I was circling around with the questions, but giving a wider audience opportunities to see this, that's easy to do by pointing them at the Flash website today, but I couldn't find access to audiovisual materials or online materials without a name and password.
Sure.
Don't see any comments that we're going to buy that name and password for the students right away.
Yeah, we're going to go with the resource that we have, and as we monitor the process that I spoke about before, as we monitor and adjust, then we'll start to add things and include teachers' families in that.
Yeah, I guess based on that discussion, then, I mean, I feel real strongly that we do need to adopt a new curricular resource, just because, like you said, our current one is so outdated and in some cases not accurate. And as long as we have some sort of process to be able to review this, to be able to make modifications in the future, I feel more comfortable about it.
Questions or comments? Do we have any questions or comments by the audience? Now? If you'd like, hold on, if you'd like to come up to the podium, address the board, state your name and address for the record, please.
3508 Northeast 109th Avenue, R6 Vancouver, Washington, 9. My question is just, I'm a little bit confused. So the new resource is going to be only in writing? The kids aren't going to be watching a video anymore? Thoughts? I was kind of confused with the discussion.
When else you'd like to address the board regarding this curriculum adoption? Okay.
Nope, I'm good.
Thank you so much. I will entertain a motion for adoption of the family life and sexual health digital.
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think that's one that'll be good to have, like, a follow-up in a year, to just kind of see how things have gone and whether or not things need to be tweaked about that. Okay, next up is themes AP French. Again, this is a curriculum adoption on second reading.
Second reading for our AP Health recommendation. I believe it's called Themes, and it will fit for AP French and fourth-year French in grades 11 and 12. It's one of those that has been reviewed and approved by the College Board, so it works for an AP program. We did not have any concerns or questions about it last year, or last meeting, so my recommendation is that we move forward with this recommendation made by the IMC and approve this curriculum, so we can purchase it.
Do we have any questions, comments? My only comment is just that I just love it when we keep, you know, adding and adding to our AP offerings and keep moving. Do we have any questions or comments by the audience? Hey. For adoption of the theme French. There's probably a, like, very snazzy French way of saying that, but...
I'm sure there is.
I don't dare, I don't dare try to pronounce it in French.
I move that we adopt the themes AP French.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next up is policy development. These are policies that have been workshopped, and they're now coming to the board for a first reading. So first, we have policy 6511, staff safety.
And this has a couple new pieces to it that are catching up with the legal references, but mostly, it's a change of policy number. This was in the 9,000 chapter of the old WASDA policies, and now it's in the 6,000 section, so it's gone from 9310 as a number to 6511. And it says, "Rules for safety and prevention of accidents will be posted in compliance with OSHA and WISHA. All hazardous chemicals will be identified and properly labeled. Staff members will be trained to use these chemicals specific to their respective jobs." And that really impacts custodial and other kinds of, and the chemistry teachers and the science teachers. Proper records will be maintained to verify that all preventative and safety measures are in place. Any injury or accidentally reported to the district office. And we will have at least one staff member at each school and work site in the district which holds a valid certificate of first aid and training and the equivalent training by a school nurse. So basically, that's what we've always done and codified with the new language coming out of the law. And since it's the first reading, I'd be more than happy to give this to Mr. Stich and let him deal with it next time.
He can't wait, I'm sure. Do we have any questions, comments by the board on this one?
Just, I guess, an observation that walking through the schools where these things are relevant, it's evident to me that these procedures are already still, already and still being done.
We take them very seriously. We have all the right cabinetry for them, and all of the, it's metal, it's not wood, et cetera, et cetera. Everything's labeled. We have the MSDS sheets in all schools and very easy to access. And somebody, everybody, every school has way more than one staff member who's trained in CPR and first aid. So we're way ahead on this, but it's one of those things that we need codified in our policy book.
Do we designate a certain employee at each building to be the one that CPR-trained? Is it like...
No, we don't say it's this person's, we just, we offer the training and we make sure that each place has one, and if they don't, then we encourage somebody to volunteer to do that. But if you're coaching anything or those kind of things, you're required to have it because of the nature of that process. So we have multiple people trained.
Do we have any comments or questions by the audience? I think that, I'd like to have it brought forward to the next board meeting for a second reading. Up is 6512 infection control program.
And this is just moving forward with some updated rules from the state. We, it's exactly what we follow for anything. And basically, what it means is that anything that's in infectious control program, we coordinate with and work with the county health department, and we make sure that we do everything that is required by law, as well as the right thing to do for either the employee or the student who happens to be affected. And it's really, it grew, it originally really became important when we had the AIDS scares. Those have died down, but we still have protocols to deal with all of those things. We also have mandatory training of all staff that they take in a video kind of process that covers infectious diseases, et cetera, and how to spread them and how to take precautions to make sure that they're not something that we deal with very often. But once in a while, we have something, whether it's a whooping cough, which we had this year, or whether it's a measles outbreak that we had this year. So those are infectious diseases that can go right through school, so we're very cautious on those.
And here, it talks about making arrangements for staff immunization.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have, so we hold like an immunization clinic or something, and then...
If there is something that they would require them to be immunized, we will make sure that happens, and we'll work with the county health department to have that happen. And we do hold, we do hold every year a day, a couple days where people can come in and get their flu shots. And encourage that, because we want people to be immunized, if they can be.
Is that a good number of people that participate?
Oh, yes, and we let people bring, we let employees bring their family. We get, it's usually a very large turnout.
Good, okay. Comments, questions?
The policy in our 6,000 section, so this is operant on our employees, our staff, and...
There's another one in the student policies that speaks specifically to students. Okay, and that'd be in the 3,000 policies. Okay?
Do we have any questions or comments by the audience? Hey, we'll bring that one back.
The next one is 6513, which is a new policy in the district. The next one is 6513, which is a new policy in the district, recommended by WASDA. And it's about workplace violence prevention. And boy, this isn't one we thought of a lot, but we need to be prepared for in case something comes up. We don't tolerate violence in the workplace, obviously. We have to do some training. We have to make sure people understand that that's not acceptable. It also does not tolerate domestic violence, including harassment of any employee or other persons while the district, while in district buildings or on, or vehicles and while on district property, or on district sanctioned social media, or while engaged in school or work-related activities. And all violent incidences must be reported and investigated. And this is cross-referenced with 6511, which is a policy that we read a minute ago. So that it makes sure we're covered. And it's also cross-referenced with the disciplinary action and discharge policy as well as the regulation of dangerous weapons on school premises. So, and it's one WASDA fields we need to have in place, so I'm recommending we move it
And since we workshopped, you've added the edit about social media.
Right, right.
I do really appreciate how much it, how it includes domestic violence situations because I know that has happened on...
We've dealt with it, yes, we have.
We've had to deal with it and, and we've always dealt with it, I mean, obviously, but I, it's, sometimes what happens at home follows our staff here, so I'm happy that we have outlined in this policy.
That's not an easy thing to deal with.
No, it's not. Do we have any comments or questions by the audience? Okay, we'll move, we'll bring this back for a second reading. Next up, we have Policy 6500 Risk Management.
Yes, we, and this also is a new policy that has half a page of legal references coming from RCWs. But basically, it just outlines what we will do in order to identify anything and measure risk of loss due to damage or destruction of district property and claims against district by others who have a claim of being harmed, et cetera, et cetera. And it, and it lays out what we have. We have an Office of Risk Management and this guides the Office of Risk Management in how to, how to follow up on a complaint, on how to make sure we're doing everything we can to keep from having risks whenever somebody points that out, we need to clean up, we need to clean it up.
Comments or questions?
Policy creates a duty for the board to review the status of risk management this year, which I think could be a new...
Do we have any comments or questions by the audience? Bring this forward for a second reading. Policy 6530 Insurance.
This is the policy, it's, it's replacing and combining policies 5331 and 8333 into a new policy, 6530. It outlines what we do with liability insurance. Mike and I and John met this afternoon with our insurance agent and got a very favorable rate and we're pretty excited about what we saw, so it's kind of timely. It also, we also dealt with property damage insurance and staff insurance and how our people are covered for liability, et cetera. The district makes available liability, life, health, and healthcare, and accident disability and salary protection insurance as part of our benefit package that people can select from. It talks about unemployment insurance and, and of course, we pay that and deal with that each month. Talks about workers' compensation. We're in a workers' compensation pool and that has worked really well for us through the ESD. And it talks about offering medical plans, which we do through the insurance committee that is made up of teachers and classified people and administrative people making those decisions and putting the packages together that people can select from. And it also is in line with, and also talks about COBRA, which is when somebody separates, they can, they can continue on the health insurance program depending on why they separated, some 18 months, some 36 months. But they still have to pay for it, but they, they can stay with the insurance company. So, and it, and it lines up with all the RCWs. And so I'm thinking it's just really pushing together a couple policies we had in different chapters before.
So are we going to need to revise this now, given the new, what's happening with Mc...
Well, in 2020, according to the new law, there will, all, all school district employees will be under what will then be called the School Employee Benefits Board, which is similar to what the PEB is for other state employees. And that, so yes, we'll have to revise it pretty significantly, but we'll have to keep the liability and the, and the property, et cetera, et cetera. But we need it on board right now because that doesn't kick in until then.
Questions or comments? Do we have any questions or comments by the audience? Forward for a second reading then. Aye, Policy 6540 School District's Responsibility for Privately-Owned Property.
This is new policy and one that WASDA has recommended to us. And it basically says, "The district will not assume responsibility for the maintenance, repair, or replacement of any privately-owned property brought to school or district function unless the use or presence of such property has been specifically requested in writing by the administration. The district will not make reimbursement for loss or damage to a staff member's personal equipment or material brought to school unless evidence can be shown that it was necessary or highly desirable for our classroom, or our school program. Evidence of loss and damage must show that the loss was not due to any negligent or fault of the staff member. Leaving items of obvious value at the school over the weekend and the district will not reimburse for loss of money or personal effects. The use of personal equipment for instructional purposes must have prior approval. Staff members must verify that no personal insurance coverage is applicable to the loss. And claims for loss must be filed within five days. Claimant may need to be, to attest to a notary public as to the nature of the loss and the value of the item. And proper documentation will accompany the requisition for reimbursement." It just outlines what happens if somebody brings stuff to work and something happens to it.
So this is probably like when the Crestline fire happened and there were claims for personal property?
Yeah, and in a disaster or a crisis like that, our, our liability insurance has a limit, an aggregate limit, but it also has a limit per employee and a limit per child. And we, we had many claims filed for that and we, many were paid out. But this is more, somebody brings something in, it gets broke, and, and if it was approved by the administration to bring it in, we're going to cover it. If it wasn't, that's a risk that the employee's taken. From what?
Estoppel in the sense of...
Without permission. Yep.
The estoppel problem is what it was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You betcha.
Any other questions?
The only circumstance that I can think of where we, the administration would specifically request personal property be brought in would be mechanics tools for the bus barn. Are there other scenarios that should...
We buy the mechanics tools for the bus garage.
Okay. I'm used to hearing about mechanics having their own set of tools and bringing them from worksite to worksite. We don't do that. And it's not a question that we'd have to answer today, could bring it back for second reading, but are there circumstances where the administration would ask an employee to bring a piece of personal property in to use at work?
You know, I'm sure there is, but I don't know off the top of my head what that would be. That would be a unique situation from a curriculum perspective or from a demonstration perspective that I'm sure, and I'm sure it happens.
It's a point of curiosity as well, but...
Or a teacher will volunteer that they have something that would be interesting and great. We're not trying to keep that from happening. And if we give them permission, we're going to cover it if something breaks. It's just when you bring it in and you don't get permission and something happens, you assume the liability.
Do we have any comments or questions by the audience? Forward then.
Okay.
Last but not least, Policy 6570 Property and Data Management.
Okay, this is also a new policy that we are just adopting or recommending adoption. And it is outlined in the WACs, so, in the RCWs, so we're in compliance. Data management is, allows us to enter into a contract with the Washington Information Processing Cooperative, WSIPSE, which is our data processing cooperative that we belong to. And property records, just talks about maintaining, our records and inventory will be maintained on land, buildings, and personal property under the control of the district. Property purchased in whole or in part by federal funds will be inventoried at least every two years, which we get audited on. The inventory will include serial number on the item and cost, et cetera. Small attractive items, computers, printers, projectors, tools, and other electronic devices will be inventoried annually and will be signed off, signed out to staff. Sign-out records will also be maintained. At the end of each school year, each teacher will, will inventory the property items in his or her classroom and turn that in. And the purpose of this policy, equipment means a unit of furniture or furnishings, an instrument or a machine, apparatus, or set of articles which retains its shape and appearance with use and it's non-expendable. And no equipment will remove for personal or non-school use. Property records will show as appropriate to each item recorded then following the description of the different properties. So, all it's really doing is saying that we have to keep track of our stuff and inventory it and make sure that we know where it's at. And if we have loss, we need to track down that loss or, or, or turn it into insurance to have it replaced. Yeah, Play-Doh doesn't retain its shape.
That's right. Any other significant comments?
Is the 10% line being double-checked by an employee of the business office in new duty? Been going on? Okay.
Mike's got that under control.
We will also be reviewing the data management program annually, annually it seems.
Okay. Do we have any comments or questions by the audience? Righty then, we'll bring it forward. Okay, next up, our Family and Community Resource Centers End-of-Year Report. And I think Melanie Green is here to share to the board all the amazing things you've been doing.
There is.
Hello, happy summer. All right, so hopefully you received a copy of the end-of-year report. And first of all, thank you so much for inviting me to share this information with you. It's been an amazing year and hopefully you saw that in that report. We have a couple of our FCRC coordinators tonight here, Anne from Harthwood, Becky from Furcrest, and Louisa from Marion. And so all of this work would not be possible without all of their incredibly hard work and dedication for the job that they do each and every day, serving our kids and families. So as you could see, it was a busy year. Community partnerships grew. We have over 150 community partnerships with nonprofits, businesses, and service clubs and others. We have almost 50 church partners just partnered with those 14 FCRCs that provide volunteers, workshops, classes, mentors, financial support, and in-kind donations to our students and families. We had nearly half a million dollars donated in kind with an additional $65,000 of funds raised and grants awarded, including the $40,000 from DiscoverOrg that were used in really creative ways to make sure families had a roof over their heads during those really cold winter months. Shoes, kind of those odds and ends that we're not able to get through community partnerships and kind of meeting those emergent needs and having those funds really changed a lot of lives this year. We had a busy holiday season with over 400 families receiving Thanksgiving food boxes and nearly 600 families, which included about 1,700 children, receiving food boxes and gifts for Christmas. Almost 200 mentors were placed in the classroom in the schools and the FCRCs, just working alongside youth in supportive roles. I would say housing was one of our biggest needs this year as we've all talked about the affordable housing crisis in our community. And one of the things I wanted to share with you, if I have time, is a wrap-up of the Homeless Student Stability Program grant. As you know, we were awarded $500,000 this last year from the Department of Commerce and it was a joint partnership with Vancouver Public Schools Battleground School District and Council for the Homeless. And we had Council for the Homeless staff working in our schools alongside the resource coordinators. We have Peggy Carlson here who was a huge partner in that, making that program successful. As with any new program, you find a lot of bumps and kinks you have to work out. But what we were able to do is support 74 households in those three districts, which included nearly 300 people. And that's parents, children, babies. Forty-five percent of those households served were literally homeless when they entered program. And so a lot of the funds did go to hotels, which was an allowable expense, making sure that those families were not out in the elements when shelter space was not available during those freezing weather months. Fifty-five percent of the households, when they entered the program, were at risk of homelessness. And included in the 74 households, there were, about 5% of those were unaccompanied homeless youth. And so each, the average spent per household was just a little over $5,000, which is a lot lower than the national average when you're looking at rapid rehousing. And the average household size was 3.8, which is a lot larger than other households served nationally. Ninety-two percent of those households exited into a positive housing experience. So they're currently housed, they're currently housed with support from a Section 8 voucher, which we are also providing referrals for that program. And adults that were earning income, raised their income, nearly $3,000 per year. So those families are in a better place than they would have ever been had we not had that grant program. And about two-thirds of that funding went to supporting the households' housing stability. So a lot of that went to paying past debts, they could, you know, barriers that were preventing them from being housed. As I mentioned, there were 74 households in Evergreen, 30, it was 37 households served. So we're very excited about that program and how that worked out. We did reapply, we're still waiting to hear, but I see housing being a continued need for, for our families. We referred nearly 200 families to the Vancouver Housing Authority Section 8 waitlist and food was another huge need, not surprisingly. We had a lot of families coming in to access the Fresh and Mobile Pantries, which is a partnership with Share in the Clark County Food Bank, and distributing nearly 52,000 pounds of food. So I also included stories because while we can share our information in numbers, it's really hearing those personal stories that really makes you realize the impact we're having on families. And so I just thank you for allowing us to be able to do this and work with our community in such creative ways to meet the needs so kids can come to school ready to learn. And so I also want to share about Project Transformation Pacific Northwest. I was there this morning volunteering at Orchards United Methodist Church. And last year I was asked to be on Board of Directors and was really excited to see the program start this, this year for the very first time in the Pacific Northwest. It comes out of the South. And so it's a little bit different here because it's a different culture, but we at Orchards United Methodist, there are 43 kids registered in that program. And that program is six hours a day. They get breakfast and lunch free through SHARE. And they're working intensely with volunteers around reading and literacy. And they do a lot of movement activities and fun other excursions. They have 4H come in, they have the library come in, and just experiences that most of those kiddos wouldn't have otherwise. So, I'm really excited to see that be so successful in its first year. And give a lot of credit to the Resource Center coordinators who referred families to that program. And knowing that those kids are in a safe space, getting food, and getting that intensive support from volunteers. If anyone's interested in helping out or seeing in action, let me know. I'll be back there tomorrow, but can take you over and show you the great work that they're doing there. And then, another kind of interesting component of one of our FCRCs at Marion, where Luisa is, is the washer and dryer. Excuse me. And so, many of you know there's a little room on the exterior of the building that houses a washer and dryer. And this year, it's been busy. Eighty percent of the time, she estimates that there's families getting clothes laundered. And so, what they do is they ask families to volunteer that time while their laundry's being done in the school. And she says there's 14 moms who are there each week, about three hours per week. And that's time spent in the classroom in the FCRC, doing projects for the school. So, that's about 42 hours of volunteer manpower that's happening because of the washer and dryer. So, it's really cool to see that and to think about the possibility as we continue to engage families in creative ways. And I think that's a component that's really hard to speak to, is the family engagement. I can tell you about community partnerships, I can talk about basic needs, but really, the family engagement piece is not one that's easy to measure. But I know from the stories that they're sharing, families are coming in, families that their second language is English are coming in more than ever before. Families where the FCRC doesn't even speak their language, they come in and access those resources and supports. And it's just been amazing to hear those stories and see that in action. And give credit to the FCRC coordinators for really making that happen because of their openness, their outgoing personalities, and just their go-getter attitude that really make families feel welcome and feel like they're included and a part of the school more than ever. And so, it's really something to be excited about. And so, thank you for your support and ongoing continued support as we continue to dive in and dig deeper with our families and kids and community.
Questions, comments?
Thank you. I'm really excited about the work that you guys have been doing. I've been able to go to many of the Faith-Based Coffees and those meetings, and I can see the partnerships that are developing, and you guys are doing a fantastic job. Your entire team is fantastic.
Great, thank you.
Anne, I would echo that. You and your staff do an amazing job. I had a question about homelessness. And I really appreciate the report because you tried to quantify as much as you could. And we still have like over 1,000 students homeless during this last year, which is similar to past years. Do you see that ever changing or keep increasing?
Looking at Peggy in the audience. You know, I think, I don't know. I mean, families that are experiencing homelessness aren't feeling the rise of the recession. They're still barely making it by. And with the rising housing costs, I don't see where they're going to get any relief. So many of our families, I think 80% of them are couch surfing, which is really unstable. They're not out in the elements, but it's a huge disruption to education. And I don't know. I mean, we were referring families to Section 8, which is a voucher that they can apply towards their housing so that housing is affordable. And because of current federal administration, that's been suspended. So, where there was some hope for families, that's been taken away. Another program that we have in partnership with the Housing Authority and Council for the Homeless is the School Housing Voucher Program, where it's a timed three- or four-year program. And they receive a subsidy, 80%, that reduces down over the four-year program so that they can better their employment, just become more stable. And we are going to expand that, and we're not anymore. And so, we had these possibilities, these hopes for these families that have disappeared. And so, our hope is with HSSP, if we do get that grant again, which we've reapplied for, that will provide some support to families experiencing homelessness. But I don't see our numbers dropping next year.
That count of over 1,000 students is a ratio of 1 in 26, which, that number comes real close to an average class size. If all of these people were distributed evenly throughout the school, then every single classroom would have a homeless kid in it. And I don't know whether that's the case. I imagine that it's concentrated in more certain areas and less concentrated in others, but it is stressing to put it in those terms and realize that our kids probably know somebody who's crashing on a couch or living in a tent or a car. And that in spite of all of the destruction that's going on, I'm pretty confident that all that construction is expensive construction and that that'll go to the most affluent people as the condos and apartments are built and then rented or sold. And not supply relief that we would hope come along, which makes my thank you to you and your staff and the support that you're giving for our community all the more poignant. I really appreciate that we can support the community in this way and have you and them operating these FCRCs and being aligned with the churches and the other organizations in the community who are so interested in providing relief. Thank you.
I have to thank Peggy Carlson, who does an amazing job as the homeless liaison, because she works hand-in-hand with the FCRCs and they're constantly talking to support families and kids. And it's kind of like between all of us, we really are able to meet the needs of our families and kids that are in these situations, unfortunately. And I've seen the community just rise up to that challenge in our Faith Partners and seeing the success of Faith-Based Coffee. And each month, they come back. You know, I'm always so amazed. I think at 8:30, usually there's just a couple people. I'm like, okay, they finally decided not to come back. And then, you know, 8:40 rolls around, we have a packed house because they want to engage, they want to know, they want to learn together. And so, it's been really awesome to see that just continue to develop and be successful. And I think our community is just amazing.
Well, I always call you and Peggy the dynamic duo. You guys are kind of like attached at the hip and getting all these things done. You know, I've been going to different election forums and all of that, and I've been hearing a lot about the network trying to piece it all together and all that. And I think what you guys have been able to do is create kind of a model for what those networks could look like and how to connect people with services and assistance and whatever they need. And so, I think that in itself is pretty remarkable. You and Peggy and I and Jay and I'm hoping I'm not missing, you know, we had the opportunity as part of our equity team to go to Spokane to talk about our plan. And what was so moving to me was how far we have come and how other districts are looking to us to see, how have you done this? Because we really are quite ahead of the game. And while we're so ahead, there's still so much to do. And as you said, you know, the situation isn't getting any easier for our families and kids. So, I just really am so proud of all of you. And I love it when I'm on a school tour with John and out there in the school, seeing what's going on. And I always like to peek into the center because there's always something going on. There's all kinds of fun things to see. And it's neat to see how people are in and out, and they feel free to come in there. The kids wander in and parents are in there, and it's an open and welcoming place that's accessible to everyone. And I just love that. So, thank you for everything you've done for those families and these kids.
Well, I feel so lucky. I do feel like the FCRC team is a bunch of superheroes because the work they do day and day out is just amazing. And they've created that environment so that it really is a community resource center. Thank you so much.
Do we have any comments or questions by the audience on this topic in this report? I think you guys deserve like a major round of applause myself.
All right, now for the most exciting topic on the agenda, we have the budget update.
I know some pretty exciting.
You have plenty to talk about tonight, I know it.
Yeah, I do.
The exciting budget stuff did happen.
Yes, exactly.
I seem to always follow people that get an applause.
Around tonight, too.
So, I think the last time we met, there was a conversation about the fact that the legislature had not completed their work. And I think a few days later, we finally did receive some ideas around what they were going to do. So, June 30th, I think we saw the actual new policies around the budget maybe Thursday afternoon. And then, they approved it, I think, by midnight Friday night. So, there was not a lot of input after the release of the budget from school districts anywhere in the state. And I would say that at this point, I think they passed the budget Friday. We had a conference call with a number of school districts in OSPI on Monday, and OSPI was just kind of looking to us for questions because they don't really know, they weren't really sure exactly what the meaning was of a lot of the things. And they were going to be meeting with legislative staff to get a better idea of intent. But ultimately, the legislature passed the budget. They passed House Bill 2242, which has a lot of policy changes for how schools operate in terms of funding. Probably the most significant changes in probably the whole time I've been involved with this stuff, which is a long time. So, what I want to do is just kind of, I had provided a document to the board that kind of got into a lot of detail. And I would first say that we still don't have clarity around a lot of this from OSPI or from anyone. So, we don't, as far as our budget process, we've kind of started wrapping up getting all the expenditures into the budget, but we still don't have a model from OSPI that would allow us to forecast what our revenue looks like. So, I'm going to talk about a lot of these things, but most likely, something I'm saying isn't completely accurate, and it's just my blanket. Most times I talk, I could say that, but I'll say it more often tonight. So, throughout the bill, there were a number of kind of titles. The first title was around salary allocation. So, kind of the biggest thing that the legislature did from the perspective of salary allocations is to eliminate the statewide salary schedule. So, for 1718, they left everything kind of intact as is and added a 2.3% COLA. But when we get to 1819 and thereafter, the state changes the way they fund. And they basically say, we're going to give you what the statewide average allocation is for a teacher, for an administrator, for classified staff. And then, you have that money to spend on your staff. And from the perspective of the teachers, that means there'll be 295 different salary schedules negotiated in the state, whereas we've had, for the most part, one salary schedule. There have been some districts that have had different salary schedules, but that's a pretty big difference to go from a statewide salary allocation model to just an allocation and you guys work on it. The other thing that they did is they put a regionalization factor. There was a lot of conversation over the last few years about whether there was going to be a, you get more if you're in King County than if you get in Whitman County. And ultimately, they did that. And there is a regionalization factor based upon median-priced houses. We haven't seen the model, but we know that Evergreen and most of Clark County will have a 6% factor added to that average salary and then funded to the school districts. In Clark County, I think there's only one district that's over that, that's Camas. And they start at 12% and then over a period of time, it's reduced to 9%. And in the bill, it says that the factor will remain in place at least through 2223. So, don't really know what that means beyond. And those districts in King County and the Everets and those in the north are topped out at 24%. And most of them are in the 18% range. So, there's a 12% to 18% difference in funding for salaries for teachers in the Puget Sound area compared to Clark County. Another thing that they do is they make the annual salary increase part of basic education, but they tie it to the implicit price deflator. And I know that Michael has researched that more than probably most of us have, and he could probably tell us what that is. But basically, it's kind of a restricted cost of living increase. So, you have your CPI, which is greater than the IPD. So, I think that what the legislature was doing was they were going to institutionalize something similar to I-732, but make it a restricted number as opposed to CPI. The plus is that it's going to be there because it's part of basic ed. The negative is it's not the number that I think probably school districts would have been asking for as that number. Over the next four years, the estimate is that would be between 1.6% and 1.9%. I think CPI is usually, you know, mid-twos.
Mike, is that per year or over?
Annual.
It's annual, okay.
So, when they set that average salary, it will annually be increased by the IPD moving Beginning in the 1920 school year, another thing that's different is the state, now they're not going to give you a salary schedule, but they're saying there's a minimum salary and a maximum salary, which is very new. So, the minimum salary is $40,000, set at $40,000 statewide, and the maximum salary is set at $90,000. And the minimum and maximum salaries apply to the services provided as part of the state's statutory program of basic ed. So, what they're really trying to, what they're trying to do is say that this is the base salary and that's what the pay is for the job of what you typically see during the school day in a school. It's the legislature's effort to try to tie the definition of basic ed to what they're funding and help with their issue with the State Supreme Court. The other thing that they did do is allow school districts to go over the maximum by 10% for certain positions, so ESAs, STEM teaching positions, special ed, some bilingual positions. So, there is an ability to go over the state max for certain positions. That's another new concept. Beginning in September 2019, September 1, 2019, supplemental contracts for certificated instructional staff may only be for enrichment activities defined by the legislature and then ultimately OSPI. So, we'll talk about enrichment levies. So, this one, the lawsuit was that the state should be paying for basic education. Local levy shouldn't be paying for basic education. So, what they're trying to do is redefine an enrichment levy as outside of basic ed. And they're saying supplemental contracts can pay for those things, supplemental contracts. There are some real narrow definitions of what you could spend supplemental contracts on. So, the agreement that we reached, not only with our teachers, but with our classified groups as well, last year, they were three-year deals. I think all of them were three, if I remember right. And all three of them remain in place. So, if you don't have a contract in place effective 201819, the bill changes the way you would collectively bargain with your groups. But in our case in Evergreen, we had a contract in place for 1718, 1819, 1920. Those contracts will remain in place, but we will need to negotiate a new salary schedule with our teachers for the 1819 and 1920 school years. So, that's to be determined how that will work. Another large change is levies, the way that levies are going to operate. Levies beginning in September 2019, school districts may use enrichment levies. They've redefined them from maintenance and operations levies to enrichment levies. They can only be used to enrich the state's program of basic ed. enrichment levies. They can only be used to enrich the state's program of basic ed. So again, they're trying to make the distinction between we fund basic ed at the state, levies are for enrichment. Another thing that's new is that levies beginning in, enrichment levies to be collected in 2020 must be submitted to OSPI for approval. So there are new processes where OSPI, a district would say to OSPI, this, these are the areas we want to spend our levy on, OSPI has to approve that. And then ultimately, at some point in the future, when we've received the money and we spent the money, the state auditor's office would audit to that plan to determine whether or not we actually did spend the funds the way we had said we were going to spend them. And the auditor's office has the ability to issue findings on that. And the board, I think by 1920, has to have a policy in place on how they will respond to any potential findings around those kinds of expenditures. So they're trying to, they're trying to change the definition, and then put in a accountability process that's transparent to monitor, to make sure that there aren't violations of that in the future. They ultimately impose what would be, I think a lot of us looked at as a levy swap. So what the state legislature and the governor have done is they have, beginning in 2019, so for next school year, 2018 calendar year, the levies that were approved will remain as is. When we get to 19, the legislature reduces the local levy to the lesser of either $1.50,000 or $2,500 a student. So whichever is the lesser of those two is what your levy is, is going to be set at, if you already have one in place. And if you don't have one in place, you're going to have to try to get one passed with those parameters involved. So we already have a levy passed for 19, we will be restricted at $1.50. So we're, ultimately, it's at $1.50. So they're reducing the local levies and increasing the state school property tax to offset that. And this is the levy swap. So for Evergreen, the piece that I was unaware of when I first looked at is actually the state property tax increase begins in 2018. So for 2018, actually, there's a tax increase across the state. Everyone will have a tax increase, and it's 80 cents, 81, 82, it's somewhere in the 80 to 90 cent range in 2018. In 2019, when the rates start rolling back, Evergreen taxpayers will actually have a tax savings, a net savings in 19 of about 80, 85 cents a thousand. So our levy rate, if you look at value growth over 1718, 19, our rate was set to be about $3.28 in 2019. That will go from 3.28 down to $1.50, so about $1.78 in savings. And then the state property tax goes up about 90, 95 cents, thereabout. So it's about an 80 some cent. So over time, the Evergreen taxpayers will see a tax savings, but the first year there will actually be a tax increase. And that's something to be aware of. Levy equalization is another thing that the district has received a lot of funding for over the past, since inception. And so what the legislature has done is said that we're going to set levy equalization at $1,500 per student. So it's, there's this old formula, we used to use this old formula that no one really understood, but a few people. Ultimately, that formula is now, if you look at a district, $1,500 per student, if it costs you, if you don't generate $1,500 a student from your $1.50 levy, the state will kick in whatever is required to get you up to $1,500. So effectively, as long as you pass a levy, you're going to be able to collect $1,500 per student if the $1.50 doesn't raise that. And ultimately, what it does is it narrows the gap. So in Evergreen, our cap for levies will be $1,500, where Seattle or some of the King County districts, it'll end up being $2,500, because the lesser of $1.50 per thousand or $2,500 for those districts is $2,500 per student. So the threshold, the gap between the theoretical haves and have-nots will shrink, but there still is a gap. So that's maybe some would consider problematic in terms of ultimate financial system that's supposed to be uniform and applied equitably across the state. So there's still going to be a gap between the two. The, we will ultimately, when this is fully implemented, probably have about a $30 million reduction in levy and levy equalization funds that will be offset by the increase in the state salaries that come, the salaries that come from the state through the teachers, administrators, and classified. But we need to see, we need to see some models. What's that? Well, ultimately, I want to, I'd like to see models that come out in the, you know, the legislature kind of did some, yeah, ultimately, we have to see what are the things that we have left at the end of this that we have to spend levy funds on compared to the 39 or 40 million that we collect, the $1,500 per student. So there's a lot of, there's a lot to be learned. There'll be a lot of arguments, I would imagine, over the next few years as to how this is actually implemented. So within the program of basic education, what they would call basic education, they are funding K3 class sizes down to 17 to 1, and that's poverty, non-poverty schools. So that's a pretty significant increase in funding. Because of the lateness of the budget completion for 1718, they're just allocating the money to us. In 1819, we have to show the actual class size reductions in order to have the funds stay with us. And they're going to revisit the rules that they have written, so that'll be something that we will absolutely want to be part of as well. Additional funds for CTE, they lower the class size in the prototypical model. There's, the prototypical schools model continues, but then SPI is required to also publish on a per-student basis how much money each district receives. But CTE funds are, there's some additional funds, they reduce class size from 26.57 to 23 to 1, so there's more money coming through to CTE. LAP funding is increased in all schools that have over 50% free and reduced rate. They add an additional 1.1 hours of instruction per week, which is a fairly significant amount of money for us. Again, we have to see the actual models to see, make sure we're calculating everything the way that they are. Highly capable has been capped at about 2.3% of your population. Now that's increased to 5% of your population. There's some additional funding for bilingual, for instructional hours for bilingual. They increase the special education rate with, that you can count students. It's been capped at 12.7%. That cap goes to 13.5%. But they don't, if you've got the students, it means you're going to get the funding for them. The fact that they've increased basic ed funding, special ed is, you get a percentage of the, of a basic ed amount for every special ed student. So as basic ed per student increases, the special ed money's going to increase as well. But we, I don't think any district, I don't know, the districts that we participated with in the conference call still believe that special ed is going to be problematic from the perspective of, perspective of the state not funding, and levy dollars still spending on special ed. And I think that the legislature believes that that's an enrichment to the special ed program. If you're, if you're getting into the levy, I don't know that districts feel that way, but I think that's the way they're going to be looking at it. One positive, we are one of the very few districts that has not been receiving fully, full funding for transportation. And we believe that there's language in the transportation section of the budget that allows OSPI to change the way that they allocate funds, which would make us whole. And that's, that's a big deal for us. Local enrichment and accountability, local enrichment, I said that now there's this enrichment levy, which is new compared to what we've had in the past. Specific definitions of allowable enrichment expenditures are related, related to supplementing basic education, extracurricular activities, extended school days, or an extended school year are allowed, early learning activities are allowed as well. And over time, OSPI can create recommendations in terms of expanding that list. So we kind of have to work with OSPI from the beginning of implementing a plan, to their approval, to them ultimately, how do they, how do they look at that? And then I mentioned the state auditor's office. Beginning in September 2017, school districts must annually report to OSPI on supplemental contracts related to TRI. OSPI will compile and submit a report to the legislature that will help inform them on the continuing work. We will, in the future, have to do four-year budgets. So we do a one-year budget, they're going to want us to put together a four-year budget and present that as part of the budget presentation to the, to the board annually. The legislature does four-year budget, I mean, one of the difficult things is that we have to rely on, on what they're going to do for the next four years to build four-year budgets. And at times, we haven't been able to know until the last day what they're going to do the next year. So I don't know how valuable a four-year budget's actually going to be, but we will be doing it regardless of how valuable it is. And the enrichment levies are, there's going to be a new fund created for enrichment levies that we have to account for separately, so that when the auditors come in, they can audit it. They also have language, around school district collective bargaining and salaries. Any group not under an existing contract in the 1819 year is restricted to a CPI of, an increase of CPI. So again, I mentioned earlier that the larger work groups are under contract already for 1819 and 1920. But we do have a couple smaller ones that will be limited by that. Policy reaffirms and specifically mentions that no actual salaries can be paid at higher rates than the average funded amounts for the program of basic ed. So we're going to, again, have to see how all of this develops in terms of, the ability, collective bargaining isn't changed, TRI is still intact. I think that the legislature's trying to define that levies can only pay for enrichment activities, they can't pay for basic ed. So that's the piece that we'll have to observe over time to see how that works. I think John mentioned also that everyone is moving to the effective January of 2020 to the School Employees Benefit Board, that will look like the Public Employees Benefit Board. In the interim, in 1718 and 1819, the allocation for insurance has increased, I think it's increased $40 from 780 to 820 in 1718, and another $20 from 820 to 840 in 1819. So we're waiting, we're still waiting for OSPI to give us the models and give us the ability to start generating numbers for us to see. I think 1718 is going to be not as problematic as 1819 and future years will be to put budgets together. And we'll see how this all plays out. I think how it looks today probably will look a lot different than it looks next session and in the future. Yeah.
Do things like music and, you know, our, kind of our arts programs and all of that, do they fall under basic ed? Do they fall under enrichment?
They're basic ed. However, the legislature has determined that enrichment levies can pay for, so the state's funding the prototypical school model. If you fund class sizes or additional course offerings, those kinds of things, beyond the minimum, the state says that those are enrichments in terms of additional staff to support that up to the limits of 1351. So they've repealed 1351. They're only funding what they had funded previously, but they're saying you can go beyond what we're funding to 1351 levels and consider that enrichment. So if we have expanded, well, we do, I mean, we obviously do because we fund a couple hundred, certain instructional staff positions out of the levy, those would be considered enrichment up to the limits of 1351, and therefore allowable in a levy, an enrichment levy. So they, that's how they've, that's their scheme on how they deal with that.
So do we think that, given some of the, some of what we're hearing here, that we still haven't seen what the report is going to be to the Supreme Court and what their reaction to this is going to be? So there could be some fallout having to do with that.
I think that the belief is that the news organization, whatever they're called, will not agree that this is, has met the requirements. I believe that Superintendent Reichdahl has already put out a press briefing saying that the levy swap means that the state is underfunding, and I'm sure that the news group will use that language to help in their effort. But I do think it was, I think from our, my perspective anyway, I'll speak for myself, they went a whole heck of a lot further than we thought they would in terms of coming up with a plan. And so it will be interesting to see how the Supreme Court reacts to this, but they did a lot more than we thought they would. And, and so that's interesting.
I think they will be after that difference between sound schools and our schools here, because that's a pretty significant amount of money per child.
Well, $1,000 a student would be another $26 million.
Yeah. So I could see that be a sticking point, for sure.
I mean, I think we have, we have schools now that couldn't accept any more teachers to drive the class sizes lower. Depending on how they.
Not specifically, I mean, Sue can generate that for us fairly easily. I think the bigger issue is until the state legislature finishes, they're still in special session, they have not adjourned because they haven't, they have not approved or come to an agreement on a capital budget. And what we need to see is what they put into a capital budget and how they deal with the SCAP, the, you know, the matching funds, as well as what are they going to do if they're going to say 17 to 1 for school districts who absolutely can't meet 17 to 1, grades K through 3 because of facilities. And when we estimated it before, it was well over 100 classrooms that we would need to meet that requirement. Right. That's right. No, I said well over 100. What was it, Sue?
116.
116, okay. Yeah, right at six elementary schools, right?
Yep. Yeah, no doubt.
There was a wrinkle in the class size projections, but those apply to 1819 and forward, right? The funding model.
The 17 to 1 applies immediately.
And the other, grade 4 is set in this prototypical model to 27. That's not a change from previous years.
Correct. No change anywhere, 4 through 12. And as I said, 1351 is wiped out.
And then, and then there's a constraint about, around reducing class sizes later on in the bill. Is that what you said? We can't reduce our class sizes using enrichment funds.
Correct.
Past a certain point.
Correct. Correct.
That's 1351.
Are those figures representative of the class sizes we've agreed to in our contracts?
I think, I think we are fine with respect to the 1351 with what we're doing now. They also do provide for the ability for a work group to make future recommendations for lowering class sizes and enhancing, I'm kind of a little skeptical of that actually happening, but they do have a work group that would work on that. But we're okay where we're at now.
Are there any, are there any things to think about with respect to next year? Does the law require you to ask the bargaining groups to open their contracts for another negotiation? Or is everything going to be complicated there?
No, no, the contracts are locked in place. I mean, the thing that, that we do have to do is negotiate a new salary schedule. So we've, we've always had a salary schedule and we've had, you know, TRI and we've, so we still have...
But not for next year.
But not for next year.
For 1718, it's all set. They continue everything the way it is, but for 1819, it's a new ballgame.
And that's going to take the form of a COLA increase inside the schedule for next year.
Correct.
Plus the increase of 5% in TRI.
Correct.
They still get to be paid according to the contract we approved.
Correct, in 1718, correct.
1819's a little scary right now.
Yep. I've got two little girls also to be here.
You didn't mention either.
That's right. You know, though, Mike said this, and I'm going to agree with him. This is far further down the road than we would have ever predicted they'd get with the partisanship that went into that room. And I really want to publicly thank Paul Harris and Ann Rivers from our districts who have been amazing and persistent in making this...
Yes.
Yeah, that's right, she was. Yeah, but you're right. I forgot, Vicki, but we've been working with Paul all session, and he's bounced a lot of ideas around with this, and a lot of those ideas ended up in this legislation. And I think he's been a huge, huge leader. And we need to, we need to thank him when we see him for his efforts. And there's a lot in this that's going to have to be sorted out. I think a lot of case law is going to come out of this before it's done. But it's a heck of a lot further down the road than they have done in any of the last sessions where they've just kicked the can down the road. This time, they made some changes, and we'll see what happens with those changes.
I had a somewhat of a detailed question, but I really appreciate the discussion about the levy equalization because hearing you talk about it makes more sense to me. You're saying, so we would be capped with the enrichment levy at $1.50 and levy equalization would take us up to 1,500?
Correct.
Without the levy equalization, where would we be approximately at $1.50?
I looked at that, I think like 800-ish, 800 plus, yeah. And then after they implemented, it's tied to IPD moving forward. So it will increase over time, but it's not capped at 1,500 forever, but it will increase at a rate probably less than inflation at that point in time.
I think we had a question from the audience. Would you like to come up to the podium, state your name, address for the record, and Mike hang out in case we need you to answer the question? Don't go away. Stay put.
Step on him.
Just one more comment. That was a summary that you put into our board packets.
Thank you.
And far more than I thought you were capable of.
Oh, jeez.
Time for his round of applause, yeah?
Not yet.
Adam Aguilera, 301 West 23rd Street, Vancouver, 98660. Mike, thank you for the excellent presentation. It was very thorough, and I'm sorry that the legislature continues to make your job even more difficult. Just one thing that you had presented that I wanted to point out is what they ended up doing with 1351 is they didn't do an outright appeal. They actually pulled it out of basic education, and then they're going to have a commission kind of review it and then decide down the road how they're going to put it back into basic education.
Anyone else who'd like to address the board on this matter?
Lauren.
Lauren, come on up.
Lauren Sickles, 3013B, Northeast 103rd Loop, Vancouver, 98662. So if I may, ask Mike a clarifying question or expand on a little bit. As I've read the bill and tried to understand, you helped a lot in that, there's always a lot of talk about the teaching side of school. I am having difficulty finding anything that addresses the classified staff side of supporting the education. And so I know there's caps top and bottom and that sort of thing. Is there anything in there that...
They do is they increase the funding, the amount, the average amount for classified and for administrative. So I think their thought is by increasing the amount from the levels that they're at now, they're funding additional dollars, there should be less reliance on the levy. I think they don't fund enough on the classified side. We're still going to, we're going to have to continue to use some enrichment levy funds to support classified. But again, within 1351, they had done a lot of work in terms of additional staffing positions for classified, not just that they were lowering class sizes, there were a lot of additional units being driven out for classified. So theoretically, what they're doing there again is saying, we're going to give you more money to pay for the classified side of things, but you can go beyond that if you're within the 1351 limits and spend that as enrichment funds. So we are getting more money to close, to reduce the amount of reliance on local levy, but there still will have to be some reliance on local levy for classified. Administrative salaries, it'll be similar. They're increasing it, but they're not increasing it as much. And they're saying that basic education, administrators support basic ed, but they also support non-basic ed programs, so federal programs, extracurricular, those are non-basic ed programs. And so you can enrich, you can use enrichment levies to support those positions that way. That makes sense? That makes sense? They're, they're increasing the allocation to reduce the reliance, but they're not wiping it out. And that's why I say at the end of this, when we know this is how much money we have for levy, the question's going to be how, how much is left? How much has the state reduced the gap of classified, administrative, and certificated salaries? What are the supplemental contracts that we will continue to pay on extracurricular? And how do those numbers match up? For classified, you're talking about? The only areas that they changed minimally were, and it wasn't for classified, outside of the ones I mentioned, CTE and these others, they redo, they increased very minimally the counseling time in middle school, so that's really certificated staff. They increased the parent involvement coordinators a little bit in elementary, and in some cases that could very well be classified, but not, nothing significant, no.
But the non-CPI thing still keeps...
Correct. So the numbers go, I think the statewide average for teachers is like 64,000. The classified goes maybe from the low 30s to the high 30s or low 40s. And administrative, I think right now we're getting like 61,000 or something, it goes maybe 95. And all of those would be adjusted by the regional factor also. They help, but they're not going to wipe it out completely.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this issue?
I'd just like to apologize for the length. Melanie got applause and I put a little boy to sleep.
Oh, he's having a good nap. No, appreciate it, Mike. This is a lot to filter through, and I know it's still a moving target, but I appreciate at least some information because it's been a lot there. All right. Now, after hearing all of that, we're ready for some good news. So Catherine, I'm excited to hear what you have to share with us tonight.
Filling in for Gail Spohler, this is not my normal gig, so I'm going to give it my best shot.
Great.
So first, we'll start with York Elementary School. They recently held a Yahoo York event for students to showcase classroom projects and digital citizenship skills they learn during library media lessons. Digital citizenship is how a person behaves in an online environment. Attached to posters were QR codes to access student projects and learning. Yahoo York held a scavenger bingo hunt during the event, encouraging students to find eight digital citizenship skills hidden around the school and turn in their bingo card list for a small prize. At Union, Union High School students for the Unified Soccer Team were selected to represent Special Olympics Washington for the Special Olympics Cascadia Championship Series. The two-day event took place at the end of June in Portland, and the event included opening ceremonies featuring Timber Joey, Unified Sports 5 versus 5 soccer matches, post-game awards, Free Youth Soccer Clinic featuring former Timbers player Jack Jusby. Also, recently, Evergreen Public Schools staff collected food items to donate to Cher. During the school year, Cher sends out nearly 2,000 bags of food to schools in our community in a backpack program to ensure our children will have nutritional food to eat over the weekend. EPS staff were able to donate more than 200 pounds of non-perishable items that will help continue the backpack program. Also recently, a community partner, Chick-fil-A, sponsored an end-of-the-school-year luncheon for Evergreen Public Schools administrative service staff. The local franchise also sponsored a teacher appreciation week in May by honoring all EPS staff with a free entree with an employee identification badge. And last but not least, John Dieter, Evergreen Public Schools superintendent, was recently honored at a retirement celebration held at Henrietta Lacks Health and Bioscience High School. John was presented with a proclamation on behalf of 30 Southwest Washington school districts for his contributions to education, along with a joint Clark County City of Vancouver proclamation in honor of his service to our district. We're going to miss him.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Catherine?
Yeah.
Good job. Hey, John?
Yeah, I got a really big report tonight. My last time to talk, so I'm going to take advantage of it. I'm joking. Most of all, I want to thank some people. The cabinet members that I work with are top-notch. And the staff in this district, teachers, classified folks, everybody. First-class, care about kids in ways that we can only hope that continues forever. The community, I've never worked in a community before that supported schools at the same level that the schools are supported in this community. Melanie talked tonight about ways that we get support, but it's also those levies Mike was talking about. It's also that our schools are well taken care of and our kids are taken care of. And the volunteers in this community blow me away. But specifically, I want to thank Joan Skelton, Troy Thomas, Holly Williams, and Skylar Haas, who have served on the board while I was superintendent. Those four-plus Victoria are the ones who hired me. I don't know if that's a feather in their cap or something they'll have to live down, but they made that choice, and I can't tell you how much I appreciated it. This has been the job of a lifetime for me. I tell people all the time, I've been the luckiest person I know because I've been able to work in this district with these great people. And I want to thank each of the people at the board level tonight because they've all been on the board for a while now. And the support and the camaraderie and the team has worked really well for us and the district, and I really believe strongly. Going forward, Evergreen is going to do great things, and I really mean that I think John Stich is going to take us to bigger and better things. And I really appreciate the fact that he spent three years with us and is ready to take control, and I'm confident that he's going to do a wonderful job. So just a thank you to everybody. It's been wonderful. I appreciate it. That's it?
That's the best update you've ever done.
I know.
Now, we have board comments.
Well, John, I think we're going to miss you an awful lot. I know that I have enjoyed working with you. You've been a great teacher and a leader for our district, and I've learned a lot from you, so thank you.
Thank you.
What kind of books do you...
It won't be as good as the ones I recommend.
I don't think so. The rest of what you've done, I have no idea.
I know.
And I'd like to echo that thanks, John. I mean, I've really appreciated the opportunity to work with you. You've been a great leader and a great teacher, and I'm just so impressed about the legacy you're leaving, you know, throughout your years in education because you've always done what's best for kids. And hearing all the stories about all the different things you've done in your career, being a bus driver and basketball coach, highly acclaimed back in Astoria. I mean, all those things that you've done, and of course, you know, more recently in Reynolds as well as in our district, but it's just been an amazing career and an amazing legacy that you're, you're leaving behind. And, you know, as Julie mentioned, yeah, I'll miss you as well.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Did Poland rank?
That's all right with me. Well, you already have a couple of tokens of our family's appreciation.
Yes, I do, and I've got them up already.
And Rachel has your thank you note.
Good.
She appreciated that too. I want to thank you for all of the years. You know, I got interested in district-level stuff at the urging of Joan Skelton years before she decided to retire, and I took an interest in this position. And we've been interacting for longer. I can't even remember how many years, but all but a couple of years of my kids' experience in the schools has been under your leadership. And you have answered every question, whether or not I have had, whether or not it was petulant, with guidance for me that helped me help my kids. And that's stretched, you know, all the way from the six years before to especially for the last couple of years. And I want to thank you for that personal support. That's how you became my friend. And with that, I ran out of stuff to say because I just can't do it. But thank you for all of that, and I wish you the best in the stuff you're going to do next. That'd be great.
Oh, my gosh, I don't even know where to start. You know, it's been interesting. We've been having our fun going-away parties. I think they were fun. And it was very obvious how much love and caring people have for you and appreciation they have for what you've brought, not only to the district, but to our community. And since then, I've been running into people, and all I keep hearing is, thank goodness he's still going to stay involved in the community. Thank goodness he's not leaving. You know, so people are feeling good about that because you will stay a part of our community and help us do what we need to do for kids. So I feel happy about that because I know we're still going to see you around. I think the thing that I'm most impressed with that a lot of people don't know about are the small, quiet things that you do. You know, the individual letters that you write for the staff's birthdays, all the staff, not just a few people, but, you know, and, you know, as we go into classrooms with you to tour and observe, how you remember so many people's names, I mean, who their kids are and what's going on in their lives. I mean, we're a big district, but you know the people here. And that piece to me has been so impressive, and I think that it's, you've... And I think that it's, you've underappreciated for how much compassion and caring you have for everybody in this district, starting with our kids, but to all of the staff and wanting best for everybody and sometimes under really challenging circumstances. Sometimes people forget that during the downturn in the recession, when we had, you know, big massive cuts that Mike didn't like talking about, John froze his own salary even though his contract would have, you know, kept him going. He froze his own so that teachers could stay in the classroom. And, you know, and there's just, I could give example after example of things of that nature. And so I, I just want you to know as someone who's been, who's been with you from the beginning, that I've always felt proud our leadership was here because not all school boards can say that, not all districts have that. I think it's really important that people remember over the years the things that you have done for us. So thank you so much. Sorry, I'm the crier of the group.
I'm the other one.
So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't be a stranger, we'll be mad.
Oh, I won't.
Right, we're going to count on that. I'll send Victoria.
Time for the music report.
I will.
Yeah, you can come for the retired teachers group the night we do the music in our schools.
I've been a member of them for years.
You can be right out there with them.
I've been a member for years.
So do we have any other comments by the board on anything else other than how much we love John? So do future agenda items, is there anything anybody?
Nope. The only thing I must say about future agenda items, we have been embarking on our policy, our new governance model that, that we're been working on. And we have already spent three full days working on having policy in place that holds all of us accountable, is transparent and is going to take us right on to the next level of where we're going. So I feel really good about, we have two more days. So we committed to five full days this summer as a board for our own professional development. We believe in it for our staff and we believe in it for ourselves. So I'm really excited about that. So we'll be coming forward. I know everybody who comes regularly to the board meetings loves our policy development that we've been working on. This is going to be the big leagues when, when these come out, so we're pretty excited. And I appreciate all the cabinet's work with us in helping us embark on this, on this work. So we have plenty on our agenda.
We all have some homework to do before next Friday, each of us.
Yes. And I've been doing some thinking about the work we've done so far and I hope we can get an opportunity to review and revisit. I imagine that's part of the workshopping, but.
It will be.
Had some, had a little three to two disagreement, no big deal, but I thought of a way to kind of try and resolve that. So I want to bring that up when we meet for workshop next.
Okay. That's good.
So it's a four to one decision.
So those workshops are next week, right? 21st and 22nd?
Yeah.
I guess I had a question. Yeah, talking about that work then, we got assigned chapters to, to lead the discussion at those workshops. What's the expectation for those discussions? Just to lead them or have a?
Yes, to be the facilitator of that part of the.
We want, need a full PowerPoint presentation in each chapter, right?
I know you're an overachiever, but you can just rein it in.
I'm not.
Michael and I'll make one each.
John shaking his head back there, saying no.
Oh, okay. And facilitate that discussion then. Okay.
Except for chapters three and six, which there's nothing in there.
So that means you have nothing to do?
Yeah.
Now's the time on our agenda. If we have any citizens who'd like to address the board on any issues that are, weren't already on the agenda, are not legal or personnel in nature, you're welcome to speak to the board for three minutes stating your name and address for the record. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board tonight? Well, I'm happy to report we don't have a workshop tonight, so we're heading out of here early. So this is exciting, it's still light outside. I appreciate those of you that have, were here and took an interest in what we were talking about tonight and especially on a warm, beautiful summer evening. So thanks for joining us. This meeting's now adjourned.